Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, everyone. May I move to the steps, the meeting of the Rosa and the General of the National Council? May I move, Mr. Chairman?
Please, I'll have to... What's your answer?
Mr. Chairman, may I move for the-
Interagency Task Force. All constitutional reforms on the proposed surgical amendments to the present 19th receiving constitution. I would like to refer this to Committee of Lords, another called Caselasan. Uh, another update of what has been transpired has been taken to the political post, utility post. As our legislative modelist, seek and enlighten me the anordinance regulating institution and maintenance of distribution lines of various utilities in the city of Soligao and for other purposes. How about any spaghetti, well done?
Uh, we have all the Surdeko, we have the engineer Nadaga, and the property to the holidays, uh, for the uh, Soligo Kigun.
And, uh, updates, update, what have, what have you read this? The request of the Tato. What are you speak?
Mr. Chair and the honorable members of this council. So from the last session we had, um, we need to resolve two issues with Surdeko. The first was the Naya posting, the second should have, they should have a representative or a fakal person. So we conducted the meeting last September 10 at Surdeko's office at 9:00 AM. So for the first issue for the Naya posting, sir, uh, we were given form that ang ilang na provide dated the December 2019 is dili siya mga kunsong na DPWH since ang ilahang, um, details was per area. Sa amo ang posting, sa amo ang for funding project proposal is by project name. Though ang among na input sa ila is by project supposedly, but then ang ilang na request was by area. So for the next year na for funding purposes, we made clear to them na dapat imani ang ilahang is submit for us para for funding purposes. For the second, uh, they provide us engineer Jason Rojo as their fakal representatives. So overall, Mr. Chair, from the DPWH inventory of those post nawala nila nakuhang from 2016 to 2019 is, uh, these eight post ang naa. By the joint circulars 1 and 2 supposedly na may marami magabay na then TOE and the DPWH, they have to submit to Naya and the IETF the list of tatlong obstructing facilities ng mga post para ma-fundingan supposedly ng DPWH. So the deadline was June 30, 2019, but unfortunately wala sila sir nakakumplay at to, so wala kami nakarequest for funding for that. So ang malamit mahimo sir for Surdeko post, tanong mga affected for our future project proposals, roadwide meaning starting sa 2021 onward. So ang wala na among pwedeng mahimo para ma-fundingan na nila ang mga posting. Tatlong mga obstructing facilities nila, uh, papas June na siya sir sa amo ang base, sa amo ang person sa mga joint circulars. So for now, wala yung mahimo na funding ang DPWH for Surdeko.
Ilan may every post, ano, five, limo?
Request from them, certified from Naya na posting, kainan ni siya type sir sa every post, so they failed to submit that one to us, that's why wala kong kami nakarequest for funding.
I understand, may wala. Iba kung pare-pareha na posting, lahat.
Good afternoon, uh, depende sa structure, sir.
Just depende, just give us video, sir.
For a previous structure na sa 25,000. However, the competition, uh, uh, I can't think if it's, it's the only the requested post you repeat and the labor.
Ilan may have, eh, may, uh, capital rate mo kasi especially don't know that they, ano connect it on, obstruction of posting? Or especially don't know na highway man?
Or if his line has a 25,000?
It may highway, no? Ilan may post?
Uh, 25,000 per, per post. Uh, from kilometer, uh, 13 to Parang Galuna, uh, nami, uh, 14 na kita na naobstruct. So so far na naikupat na nakuha, then-
14?
14 sa, out of the 58 na gireport sa DPWH for the year 2016 to 2019. Ang kibali na pullout na is 11 poles. So Borumi Street nagaprogram na sa Soligo, however, na siya 14, 14 poles na idolitay. Ang among problema is that wala na yung balinan kay, uh, kung matatita na to akong posting na direct isulot sa Naya Kanabi, sulod dinasa sa isa sa kasadang. So kung matong ibalhin di ba sa other side sa kanaw, wala na yung kwan kaya 'yung mga building, lintag ka sa natong building. So isan ako, uh, purpose ko na sasabihin ko nga matabang kong, uh, ma-plaster ang natong buhat.
Do you delete, no? Considering na, may paya delete ang DPWH? Payman sa Surdeko, ano? Kay, oh, na, this, ilan, time na sumatingin namin o ma-change?
That's age, nakakumplay ang Surdeko para ma-upin namo si Jeff sa funding. So maugan itong among pinakaan sa ila kay wala man sila nakakumplay, Mr. Chair. That's why wala siya na-upin sa funding.
Pasapuwan, iya sila mag-submit?
Yes, sir. Based na amoy, sir, mauang ang TOE and the DPWH siya na joint circulars 1 and 2 na supposedly na sila'y mga ipangkumplay, uh, um, deadline actually was June 30, 2019 para ma-fundingan namo, sir, ang tatong all obstructing facilities. Kaya lang wala man sila nakakumplay at to, sir, so balagan siya na-upin for funding.
Ah, so palagi, failure na Surdeko?
Yes, sir.
No, masap, Mr. Engineer, yung ano, mga attendant. Pero wasa porontan ini sa city na i-waitin na?
For any project, because, uh, nakita na siya ang problema, mga tong gipitong joint circular 1, then wala kong kaon ma-implemente, na na po joint circular 2. Then, uh, mga tong gino ni mga, by June 30, dapat ang Naya, sa headlines, Naya mo submitted to sa IETF then. IETF will inform us that, uh, ganito ang obstructing, mga, na so, uh, joint circular interagency task force, uh, composed of, uh, DPWH and, uh, TOE. So, we submitted to Naya or, uh, before June 13, we submit me, expecting that Naya will submit to IETF, the IETF will inform us. So, by July, wala man may makatawa, nagpaloop din sa Naya. Then, ang problema is that ang katulang template, uh, tatlong isa sa problema is kung gino ni mga, ang among submit na project is dili mo, dili mo jay sa ilang buhan according sa DPWH. So, uh, nagproblema pag ipaluit ang Naya o IETF kung asal na siya particular na project. So, by November, uh, without template, uh, completed, na submit me sa Naya, then by, uh, December, na pipeline ang Naya, then we, uh, sa IETF, na redlines that forward nila ni sa DPWH. So, napagopre, then, sa pag, meanwhile, wala pa sa mga kuhan, uh, sige meo pala ako, wala kong kaon. Pero ang kinuwan na obstructing, among na siyang hinahinarian. Uh, so for year 2020, dapat kutsi headlines, ang implementing agency before maya'ong budget, matinform na daan sa Soligo, visa headlines para sa 40 implemented, 50, 20 implementation. Para karumpot, ang tong nakita sa among record, wala kong ma-inform sa DPWH. So na-inform na me sa project, once na electric construction be there, then after that, mo ako siya na ma, uh, request of site inspection sa affected area. So during some meeting ni ma'am, uh, we plan na karong by 2021, among na siyang, uh, komply kong requirement bitsa joint circular between DPWH and TOE.
Uh, engineer engineer, you mentioned earlier about the 2016 to 2019 projects. The removal of the post can all over be funded by DPWH. So what will be funded by DPWH now are projects to be implemented in 2021?
Yes, sir.
So in other words, the removal of the post, uh, from 2020 going back to 2016 will now become be the liability of the electrical property?
Yes, sir. Based on the joint circular. Actually, sir, sayang ganyan unfortunately, kay for joint circular 1, we have even, ang joint circular 1 was issued, um, July 2017. So they have given one year to comply for the inventory, the list of their, uh, obstructing facilities para ang siyang ma-fundingan. And then the joint, wala ang mit sila na action for that. So na-create ang joint circular 2 sa May 2019, na naanaang tatlong creation of the IETF between sa TOE, Naya, and DPWH. So big, uh, itagaan ang mga electrical operatives to submit inventory for all those obstructing facilities para ma-fundingan ang among agency. So the deadline was on June 30. And for Karaba, uh, the only easy na nakakumplay was the Sharetoko. So for Surdeko, wala sila makakumplay. And then for joint circular 2, sir, ang timeline kung bagay niya is June 30 ang deadline sa tatlong mga inventory na supposedly among fundingan. Uh, para December 31, 2019, dapat wala na atong ilang mga posting.
Going back to engineer, you said you submitted, you tried to submit requirements on June 30, 2019?
Before June 30, because, uh-
June before or June 30? June 30 mo lang din na, kagatipit na no?
Exactly, June 28, we submitted to Naya, so-
June 28? So, 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 iti, iti, ilan ka, baka, engineer, dinali, yung, yung lawyer, correct? Did you try to consult your lawyer so well as the implementation of the, uh, maraming mga agreement?
Sir, get our sir.
Wala.
Eh, ano, iyan mo sa job, that look template, di ba? You were talking about the template, sir, the template?
Uh, Naya did not, uh, give, uh, we, we just submitted, uh, a review mission post for to Naya. So the joint circular, circular, uh, guidance that Naya will submit to IETF, so-
Now, it stated earlier that you submitted, you tried to submit requirements to Naya, then, and Naya naglibo kay, uh, kung makakumplay sa template, correct?
After-
Di, tumatakbo, sakto po, delete.
Uh, during, after our submission, uh, we follow up to Naya why we did not, uh, receive the evaluation. According to them, uh, they cannot reconcile our, uh, submitted documents with, uh, Naya, with DPWH's project, uh, coding per, uh, decision, ilan dier. So we submitted to them there, Naya.
Ang coding may di?
Yes.
Sir, pagtongla, hindi to diyan po sa job, di ba? If na busy consultant with DPWH's kung coding, right?
We, we are waiting for the, because the redlines is that the IETF will inform us. So we tried to follow up, that's, uh, that's the reply from, uh, Naya when we follow up.
The reality now is that, how many post that you remove?
50.
May na, may tantan na, uh-
15.
Pilako 50 minus 11? So, ilan mo yon? 47?
70.
So the removal now of the 47 post is now the responsibility of Surdeko. If we will follow the memorandum of agreement between the Department of Energy and DPWH. Ano sa manila sa tantan, will, will, will you wait for a resolution for you to remove all the 47 posts?
Uh, we have, uh, already started, uh, calling out phones, uh, however, there are also, uh, problems during the pullout. For example, may sa tumang, key ballong sa Pilipino, uh, wires.
And mo palo sila, mo palo sila?
So sa mga karong nami, uh, upat for, uh, for pullout, na lai mga-
Ibibis sa, pink, blue, smart, may ano sila sa internet, di ba?
Yes, color yun talaga.
Ah, tani, so mo palo sila, but, ang problema pagdudal sa internet online or paglasik. The reality let me, engineer Nadaga, that the removal of the 47, uh, 47 post is now the responsibility of Surdeko. Ano yung mahimo?
We have the responsibility, but, uh, we have, uh, pending company na Naya to, uh, IETF for consideration. However, without, without, uh, approval, the reconsideration, we will, uh, try to pull out the, uh, remaining poles.
Uh, 47, kung man standing na posting na yun, di ba? Yung 47 post, standing yun, uh, or removal?
Or removal.
Yung na salona sa highway, kay, eto may jokop na posti, yata yon mga wire, no? As per na dino?
Uh, na, na, ito hanga, wala ni wire korporal.
Yata, tagali yun, the priority ni sa highway, salona, eh, ito dino na nga, kusumay nariw na sakta na.
Ulmus na na, pananaman, di ko na supporting na kapa lawang minuto, at bangsa kaysa ng musika, diyan. So, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try.
Yung ano, kapi na dino?
Good afternoon, Mr. Nadaga. I suggested that, uh, we file cases against, uh, Surdeko, and, uh, we have to remove this, uh, post, uh, by then. Dapos, uh, charge nato sa ila, now is it, uh, easy vote? Okay, numisans man makonsider yun na mga, labi na daw sa tumahan ng highway?
Uh, actually, the answer highway, the DPWH's na tao dito?
Yes, sir, sir, uh, naklear na kuhan na, na-inspire na, naglatak na clear yun sa Surdeko na para DPWH's na magkaspo tanan, tila sa mga care. Kaya pa nila sa kasigas sa pag sakto sa tonor ng tagatak sa ila, so kung ang obligasyon na nila tanan. So na ako suggestion, kung maguyan kita sa ila, may magitabo na disgrasya na do't paabot, asto kita rin matantang, then, charge nato sa ila.
Uh, I would like to request for time to, to study whether or not, uh, we have, we have a legal capacity to, to Surdeko. Uh, as far as this post is concerned, kasi daw magtawa sa national highway, that is not the national highway, is not the property of the local government. Sa national government.
Because it was made clear by the representative of DPWH na obligation na gano'n nato, since nag-expire na ang period na nagkakat sa Surdeko, obligation nato na magtangtang, in charge nato sa Surdeko. And, uh, siguro, mo otita sa'yo, sir, na makonsider man na kuyan ng numisans, yun, ilang mga postinagdahan sa tumahan mismo ng dayan.
Actually, with all your respect sa DPWH's, daw DPWH's, ano daw sila mo reassign? Reassign nila daw ilang obligasyon sa ato, daw magpakuapin ng mga, mga ito, mga, uh, uh, idikasetlers along the highway. Ita diha ko na may pakatiun, na ilang. You know, ang point of this, this, all of my, uh, personality ng local government, so, Surdeko, may tumo daw sa highway, na daw highway sa national government daw siya, ang ma-prejudice daw ang national government, although incidentally, kita sa, must suffer. But the point here is, so, we must have the, the, the legal personality to be able to sue.
We have, sir, again, those post are numisans.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, eh, here go guys, ini na kanti goro, sir. By legal implication, uh, Surdeko, simbago lang, just in case, yung ta'jaki mo disgrasya dito, you are really liable for damages, punjaki mo bangka dito, kay, nasasakan naman atong kumana, it is your obligation to remove those, uh, numisans daw na to recantre. So, by legal implication, anything that will happen there, accident yon, liable yun daw, ang Surdeko.
At Surdeko.
Of course, yun, ipalus, kasi ito ay dapat responsible officer ng Surdeko, the responsible officer of Surdeko, of course. So with that, your responsibility, ano kapugat, nakuha ko dito dito dito, as soon as possible. I think we cannot just wait for mga idyo, mga, uh, araw, idyo, mga failures, and so, compliance and so forth, we cannot accept that. Ah, au, au, anak roto, daw, nakuhaan, idyo daw, as early as possible para to ang poing ini accident. Ako kita tablaw last session, maguyan taba kita na jay dito dito, mga disgrasya, para nato daw, yun. That is why I personally included, included this in our agenda, kay nakita ko ganun dyan, problema. Kay, ano kita gulusay, or moro, in dyan, atupat ang action, kunjaan tayo na ita box, oh, atupat ang mas kapakapas. So, kuman, the only thing that we can ask, that we will ask from Surdeko is you remove it as early as possible. O, para di nakita magkasabok pa, cloud.
Trying to, to study, uh, whether or not, because, sa ato, una-una, kuman, may tinatawan Surdeko, iha, for the election duty. Kaya tayo na sila, sa busman, ilakit lang mga official, when ako yun, iha, at sa tao talaga.
It is with DPWH?
Oh, oh, ilakit, ilakit, sa highway DPWH, pero ito talaga, di rakan kita mga ayang-ayang, posi, posi kita na noras kasi hindi yun iha. Talaga talaga sila? Oh, may ato may ito kuman, sino ito talaga, kay, no, kay, na yun na problema, ito, ito katulay na panimis yun di city hold. Daw mga postinu, daw pa, yah, may mayu, ilan mo yun, patantan? Ilan mo yun, patantan, oh, may, galing kung gano'n? Eh, iha talaga sila sa busman, ipapais na ato sila ng legislative proceedings, oh, may, may difference, masugat ako. I'm doing that, if the body will, will allow me to do that, I'm going to sue everyone, kuman.
What is the pleasure of the couch, sir?
So na, kung di na tayo, kuman, ipasa kuman ano sa'yo, kuman.
Iliang ay siguro, let's, let's give them a time. That is why, during the last session, ang motan ako ng time people, ok, okay, dito dito daw, ultimately masolve ng problema. So we'll give them the opportunity to do whatever is necessary under the circumstance. Pero, we will, as, in isato council, we will all agree that just in case they will not, uh, comply, ato gano'n sila paila ng kaso, we will file a resolution. At umro na daw na ato mahimo pa to protect the interest of, of the people.
Halakos of understanding that sa Surdeko, mo, mo plamong sila buhay, diwen? May bayan pa? Diwen, understand, di sila buhay ngas, may bayan? But, uh, di nature nung daw, daw sa highway, grabe ka na ligado. Di alay, decision na daw ng Surdeko, when or, when or without them, dapat na nature daw, yun, iha. There is some ladyan inclination coming from this legal law, na he will, he will file case against DPWH and Surdeko. Um, yun na, daw, yun, yun, kada yun, responsibilidad. Eh, nagpasapasa mo na mo kaya na, consider, ganu byway, yung na di buhay ngas, yata byway, by payment.
Gusto mo siya kasinubayan?
Ito lang, no more na siya, dito dito dyan.
My respect to all the DPWH's, sir, is concerned, with regards to the post na ang mga joint circulars, the TOE and the DPWH, in which ang Surdeko ang wala nakakumplay, atong time among ma-fundingan na tatlong mga posting. So we are not, wala kami nagpasapasa, but, uh, na amoy, may be, count on na mga circulars.
Yes, I know. What are those circulars, oh, para nitan di nila tumanon, action ka mo, iyo ikiha? Ikiha niyo, kay ama sila magkumplay, dili kay kami, amoy ikiha, pero kung namin yung gusto, ilakip ka mo? Ah, kung ano dito?
Wala pa sa ni, sir, na, na, inuna ka mo ang ikiha.
Di, ma, sino mapadza, kung para nitan magtry pa kumana yung posti, papataya ko. Sila'y manupat? Oh, may ito sorte? Di, di, seriuso kita ini, naabot na kita dinilat, posi kita na noras, tapos magpasapasa kihapon. Maglaro kita kung maghimon ato kung dili, mag sorte, kung dili to mahimo, kami himo. Ano ang problema ito?
Based on the circulars, uh, December 31, 2019, dapat tumawalan ang post, so January, we have, um, submitted reports, tatlong mga, wala pa nila na, nakuha ng mga post, this year. It's all up to our central and the IETF, kung saan next move, so we're, we're, um, nagulat yun.
Actually, yata may pandiming, problema na daw, yata may pandiming, daw mga posting, daw na daw, ang question daw, kaya wala matagayo na importansya. Ang wala man daw, kung if the owner of the body will resolve, will, uh, uh, pass the resolution, na ikiha sa sinasig.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, yes, it was a chance, mano. Taga ikonok me ni John, and, time frame, ok, uno ni John matanggal tanan. By the time, kundi pagiha ko ni John makumplay, despite of the leniency that we have, uh, given, we will file cases against you, or your officers. Uh, Surdeko, can you give us? Di na tamang tuwir-tuwir, mga technicalities, circular, so and so forth, compliance, failure of one agency against the other. And yun na daw kay, it's too late today, di na di kita daw magbalik-balik kay di daw na solution sa problema.
With, uh, from kilometer 30 to going to Soligo City, uh, uh, within this, uh, by, uh, November, however.
Alay lang ka, kay na 47 daw kabok, oh, atay kaminan period, kuno daw mga tanggal tanan daw, dili, rapat tanggal, si minuha daw, lungat na ma-bili.
So, uh-
Daw 47, kuno mang daw daw mga wire.
So kung matabangan may sa city, kaya rin sa Borumi Street, uh, uh, mapulas yung priority, 14 mo to boklang sa buhat, Borumi Street, matabangan may sa, uh, city, sa, sa, location, suppose. Uh, we, kuhan na, by December, ma, kung dito na mo.
December? Delay pa nga, 2021?
Yeah, ba, di.
Ah, sige.
Excuse me, Nadalio, out of the 47 po sa city, dito na, the 47?
Ano ba city?
Uy.
Ploding mapawa, basta part.
Sige, we, we will take your word, basta before 2021, why December 21? Oh, duga'y kuno, surprise? Mubuo-mubuo eh?
One year and four months man?
Four months, huh?
Di four months, ah, gan?
Twenty?
This year, this year.
December 2021?
Like, before, before January 1, 2021?
Oh, okay.
Before na daw na pizza, so until December 31 only, from now on until December 31?
Exploding sa Borumi Street, eh, ba sinob? Wala yun, dili na mawawang isip, uh, pwede, most, mawawang city nga, di na rawat na yung krimtinahan, diya?
Sige lang, mubutay pa, Nadalio, kumandin man yun, natin na dyan Borumi Street, di putang dyan yun sa Ismed portion?
Wala yun Ismed, uh, sir, uh, may mga building, kung matong talawo, na ganang, uh, upi, ganang, sa building na na sa, uh, gatel, sa, uh, na ngayon, pigment.
Ah, good, ah, Mr. Chair, ah, request that Sorneco kay, there are some post blood. Ah, doon doon sa mga building, uno, doon, pat, ah, super, maya, from city government, dari la si, ah, pinon. Kaya yata ng area, mga posis sa Sorneco. Kaya, ano kedy, unahin, eh, batis, basta naon, eh, mobika, sa pelias pasiyon sa burobe, sa public market, naon, eh, yung posting, unahin, ah, buta buta ng mga area. Aba zanang problema kumana sa Sorneco. Etang idyo check in, kuman. Aran na juga puhan, etang, aran na juga puhan ato, posting, unahin, eh, di buta, di have a power, ah, engineer.